I'd like to call to order the April 25th, 2023 regularly scheduled board meeting for Richland Two. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move to approve the agenda for the February 28th regular board meeting.
April 25th.
My apologies, I was reading. I move to approve the agenda for the April 25th regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mr. Trapp to approve the agenda for tonight's board meeting. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Board members, please vote once the motion is posted. Do we need a hand vote? Okay, the motion carries. There are five yes and there are two no. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student admission requests into the district's adult education program, student appeals, breach of contracts, employment recommendations and certified releases, and employment matter regarding a non-renewal of a certified teacher, and employee grievance, apparent grievance, and a contractual matter regarding the leasing and purchasing of, and purchase of properties.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Board, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I have a question about item 3.6. Is this a recommendation from the superintendent about the matter regarding a non-renewal of a certified teacher?
Yes, that's at the initiative of administration. Mrs. Nash, can you please confirm the motion is posted?
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. And the vote is six yes with one abstention. The board will now convene, and zero noes. The motion carries. The board will now convene in executive session. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we adjourned executive, that we adjourned executive session at 6:30 PM and resume in public session at 6:40.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Mr. Trapp, is the motion correct?
Yes.
And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item four, the inspirational moment, pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Nash.
Well, I have the pleasure of, our presenter is going to be Dandrid Hingleton III. He is a second-year Richland Two employee, social support teacher with grades third through fifth at North Springs Elementary. He received a bachelor's degree in multi-categorical special education from Columbia College, nearly a decade of special education experience as a paraprofessional and special education teacher, and awarded Teacher of the Year for North Springs Elementary for 2023 and 2024 school year.
Thank you for the introduction. I would like to give thanks to Madam Chair and all the school board members for allowing me to partake in this inspirational moment during Autism Awareness Month. As I already stated, I'm Dandrid Hingleton III and I currently work in the social support classroom in North Springs Elementary School, and I work with learners with various disabilities and deficits, and some of the learners that I teach also have other disabilities, also including autism. But our purpose today is to enlighten, empower, and to gracefully inspire those to collaborate and connect with learners with autism and truly make our school and our surrounding community diverse and inclusive. As we all know, the April is Autism Awareness Month, and I just want to give a few statistics and a brief description of what autism is, and this comes directly from AutismSpeaks.org. And it says, "Autism refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, speech issues, and nonverbal communication." In 2023, the CDC reported that approximately one in 36 children in the U.S. are diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. Boys are four times more likely to be diagnosed with autism than girls. Most children are still being diagnosed after the age of four, though autism can reliably be diagnosed as early as age two. Autism affects all ethnic and all socio-economic groups. Minority groups tend to be diagnosed later and less often. Early intervention affords the best opportunity for healthy development and to deliver benefits across the lifespan. Now, in North Springs Elementary School, we address this by using our cricket traits. It's the evidence-based curriculum in our school community, and by using the profile of an SC graduate, school stakeholders have developed the cricket traits for staff, students, and families in our community. Each trait is identified, defined, taught, modeled, integrated with curriculum, and acknowledged routinely. The cricket traits represent the social-emotional skills that we want all students to exhibit throughout the entire school day and also within their communities. At NSE, the expectations to achieve academically and functionally are set very high, and when we use these cricket traits, these are traits that we need all of our kids to display in the classroom environment. The word cricket is an acronym for collaboration, responsibility, integrity, creativity, kindness, effort, and finally, we all have this, right? Talent. In each letter, the word cricket represents these traits. Collaboration is defined as working together to achieve a goal. At NSE, we look to create an inclusive school community that utilizes inclusion in our highly specialized programs. Learners with autism routinely collaborate with school-aged peers throughout the day to implement and practice social skills learned in our specialized program. Doing what we're expected to do is our cricket trait of responsibility. We are able to gradually release responsibility to our learners with autism, and for those who are ready to take on those challenges, such as being able to report to various places independently, to be able to link with their peer buddies, and also to complete work and task assignments. The cricket trait of integrity is used as well as we're trying to get our students, and you know sometimes it's going to be a challenge, to get our students to be honest about what they can and can't do in asking for help when it's needed. Other coping strategies are also needed to be used with integrity to help them understand how to calm themselves when they are frustrated. Sound like something we need to? Having integrity is what we do even when no one is looking, doing the right thing even though no one is looking, and this is very important because we want to foster independence amongst all of our learners. Now, the cricket trait of creativity is one of the biggest things I see in the classroom. Oftentimes, as an educator, we kind of talk about the academics and some of the things that we don't see happening correctly, but these children are truly creative. We can see that they are great artists, they are great mathematicians, they are great readers and writers, they are, they have fluency, they can comprehend things, and they view the world differently than their peers, and it's our responsibility to continue to foster this creativity within our children. The cricket trait of kindness is self-explanatory, is something we all need more of in today's world. We work hard to identify, model, and show kindness by starting with empathy. Students in my classroom often benefit from explicit instruction on this social skill. We utilize a variety of strategies like morning meetings, structured activities with support, and other times when they can link with other grade-level peers. Our cricket trait for effort, it helps students to focus on striving for their personal best each and every day. We work hard to praise and acknowledge our students for giving them, for giving their personal best. And finally, our last cricket trait of talent, which also ties into creativity. As teachers, as educators, it is our job to find out what our child's talent is. When I say that word "child," they're not just my students, they're my children. So it's our job to find out what that talent is. It may be something musically, it may be something kinesthetically, it may be something visually, it may be something auditory, but whatever that intelligence is, we need to work on trying to access that so they can be able to access the classroom. Whatever case it may be, it's up to us to cultivate that talent and to make sure that they can continue to grow within the academic arena. Now, finally, two things before I close. I want to talk about the cricket pledge. When I first started working in North Springs, this was something that I was not familiar with, and my students just started reciting it. I'm like, what are they reciting? I need to learn this, right? And so my crickets, my crickets at school, and by the way, we're the Cricket College, I got to do a shout-out to the Cricket College, SSP, they said that I will do my best to be the best. I will listen, I will do it the first time, I will be kind, I will stay on task, I can learn, I will learn. You see? You know, it's all up to me. This is something that we say with my third, fourth, and fifth graders every single morning. So I say, I got to step my game up, so I say, we going to do a morning affirmation too. And this is something that I share with my students each morning, and the first thing I start off with, and making sure that we're being empathetic with all learners, and I do this with all of the students, I say, this is not the students within my class, I say, I love you. I love you. I truly love them. I am smart. I want them to say that to themselves. I am strong. We do the muscles too, like we, we show the muscles, right? We point to our brain, we say we're smart. We say we can read well, and even for our nonverbal students, I want them to be able to sign that to me. I can read well, I can write well, I can do math well, and the one we always stop on, I can control my way. I bet y'all know. My behavior. Someone already said it on the board. I can control my behavior. I am amazing. I am powerful. I can make great decisions, and the last thing we end with is I can do the impossible. I let my students know, you getting ready to take this SC Ready test? You getting ready to take these benchmarks? You getting ready to test for these IEP goals? I'm about to progress monitor you, I'm about to do all these things with you, but you can do the impossible. I'm about to send you out to this general education class for the first time. You got it. You can do these things. You can do the impossible. So as I close our inspirational moment, I hope that you feel inspired, empowered, and enlightened, and I hope that when you're with your colleagues, when you're with your fellow teachers, when you're with your fellow educators, and when you come across someone who may be a little different, when you come across someone who may have a different way of looking at things, let us practice patience. Let us collaborate with them. Let us show care for them. Let us be empathetic toward their needs so we can help them grow to the learner and to the student that we want them to be. Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to present this inspirational moment, and I'll take a quote from AutismSpeaks.org. Together we stand for a world of difference. Thank you.[927.20][927.20](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so very much. Will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Stand for another difference. Are everyone standing? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, board members.
Thank you again for the inspirational moment. We'll be moving on to item five, the consent agenda. Board members, is there anything that any board member would request to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
Could we vote on 5.4 separately?
Yes, we'll pull ratifications of employment separately. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda with the exception of item 5.4?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 5.4.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 5.4, ratifications of employment. Board, is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Onto item 5.4, ratifications for employment.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the ratification of all employees for the 2023-2024 school year with the exception of employees 49, 50, and 51.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion has been made by Mr. Trapp to, he's moved to approve or not approve, excuse me, the ratification of employees 49, 50, and 51. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
Can you provide clarification on the purpose of this? I'm just hearing.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Can you provide clarification on the purpose of this? I'm just...
Mr. Trapp has made a motion to not ratify three employees.
Is there a reason why?
I will try to answer that. My microphone will come on.
Okay.
I do not support ratification of those three employees, and I would like to vote separately on the rest.
Is that per recommendation of the superintendent?
Ratification is, this is ratification from the board. The superintendent, no, actually did approve or has presented that for approval, but it's the board's job to ratify the employees.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Just a minute. Ms. Porter, are you, do you have additional questions or is that?
No.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I have a question, just for clarity. I want to retract that and remove employee number 49. That was, that was something totally different that I was not aware of.
Dr. Scott, how about if I make the, I'd like to make a primary amendment to it to remove employee 49 from Mr. Trapp's main, or main motion. Is there a second on that?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm just curious that anybody was aware of any of them, because I wasn't aware of any, so I'm now listening and I hear that there are some board members that were aware of some.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
No one was aware of what I was going to, the motion I was going to make until I made it, just so y'all know.
Exactly, and that's why I asked to remove employee number 49, because I was not aware of that. This is my first time hearing that. So when I second, I second based on the information from the previous board meeting. So something new was added that I don't agree with, so I'm asking that employee number 49 be removed, because that's not something that I will support now or in the future.
Thank you for clarification.
Is there any more discussion on this, on the primary amendment to remove employee number 49 from Mr. Trapp's motion? There's no discussion? We'll wait for the motion to be, this, this is the primary amendment to the main motion to remove employee number 49 from Mr. Trapp's main motion. Dr. Scott made the second. So she, she seconded the primary amendment. I made the, I made the primary amendment motion. Mr. Trapp made the main motion, and Dr. Scott seconded the main motion. Then I made a primary amendment that Dr. Scott seconded.
No, for clarity, I don't want my name up there seconding that primary motion, because that's not something that I support. That was something that was added that I was not aware of, so, no. I'm not going to second that unless employee number 49 is removed and the motion is stated with the previous employees. So I want that to be clear.
So does that mean that these are tracks?
I don't think that you can remove your name, but your action by not supporting it in the secondary amendment, or the primary amendment will support the fact that you didn't agree with that. And you can actually have it put on the record? Why don't you just have it stated, put on the record, that you didn't support?
No, what I would like is to rescind my motion, and that I can do, because I don't want my second for that, because that's not what I'm seconding. So I would like to rescind my second from the primary motion.
I don't believe that you can... You can rescind the motion, but you can't rescind seconding the motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp.
Can I rescind, can I rescind the original motion?
Yes, you may rescind your original motion.
Then I will do that and someone else can make a motion.
So I'll rescind my motion, you rescind your motion. Okay, Dr. Scott.
Yes.
Did you say you'll make the motion?
Oh, absolutely. I'll make the, what is it?
I'll make the motion. I move that the board not ratify the employment agreements for employees 50 and 51 for the 2023-24 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I'd like clarification that this is with the recommendation from the superintendent.
The superintendent did submit to the board in board docs, yes, that they were putting them up for ratification, and the, and the board has just made a motion to not agree with the superintendent's recommendation. To not ratify the employment agreements for employees 50 and 51 for the 2023-24 school year.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
I will not be voting on this tonight. This entire ratification process has been very confusing and not clear, and so I am abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I too, due to lack of transparency, have decided not to vote on this matter.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's me down here.
I, I will be supporting this, and I think for transparency, sometimes we get here and we like to throw the rock and hide our hand, and pretend as if we don't know what's going on, because we're trying to fool the public, but one thing that I like for people and people who know me, know that I'm very transparent. If I support something, I'm going to support it, and what you will find sometimes is people will support things behind closed doors and come and try to impress people, and don't. I call that a coward, and I call it throwing a rock and hiding your hand.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. McFadden.
I too will be abstaining from this, this vote because of the process in which it was administered. It is very confusing, and it wasn't clear from the very beginning, so I'm going to refrain from this as well.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Any other board comments? The motion is correct. Board members, please vote. And the vote is four yes, three abstentions, zero no. The motion carries. I would like to make another motion to approve the ratification of all other employees with the exception of 50 and 51. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Lindsay Agostini and, excuse me, and seconded by Dr. Scott. Board members, any discussion? There is no discussion. The motion is correct. Board members, please vote.
Madam Chair. Clarification. I just voted or abstained from ratifying employees 51, 50 and 51, so if I vote for this, it's going to be...
It's already been called, and you've cast your vote.
No, I pushed, changed my vote.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I did.
So is your vote incorrect?
Yes, it is. Because since I moved to ratify the employment of all employees except fifty-one and fifty, fifty and fifty-one, I want to ratify, well, I want to not, I want to abstain from saying that I don't ratify fifty and fifty-one.
Well, you're abstaining from the vote, so that's in fact what you're doing. If you don't agree with it and you want to abstain.
I don't want it to say yes, because that's not what I want. And I pushed, changed my vote.
Okay, we're going to let the vote stand as is, therefore, yes?
We just changed it for Dr. Scott. I think we should have.
She pulled the motion. She didn't change her vote.
Okay, so I hit change my vote, because whenever I hit it, that's not what it meant. The problem that I have is except employees fifty and fifty-one.
Well, then you're not agreeing with the motion.
I want to abstain from it.
You have?
No.
Is that now what you've done?
It said yes.
Oh, you're saying your vote up there is incorrect?
Yes. And I hit change my vote before it popped, but it popped when I was speaking.
Well, actually, and you know what? Since you are on the prevailing side right now, because the motion would carry four yes, three abstentions, you can recall the vote.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recall the vote.
So we can revisit this, all right. So I will make the motion again to ratify the employment of all employees except employees fifty and fifty-one. We'll have to have it documented that we are revisiting this vote. In Roberts' rules, if the prevailing side wins, it can be brought up again.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry? Who seconded the motion? Was there a second to redo this motion?
I'll second.
Dr. Scott seconded it again. Okay, and board members, please vote. So the vote is four yes, three abstentions, the motion carries. We are now moving on to item six, public participation. Before we begin, I would like to remind our speakers that each person is limited to three minutes and that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to staff members for response at a later time. And our first speaker this evening is Craig Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, board members, for allowing me to speak with you this evening. In your incredible roles and responsibilities as good stewards of the education of the children of this district, do not take your time for granted. Know that I made my first appearance in front of this board because of nothing less than an issue I find important and compelling with respect to the next generation. I'm here to share my thoughts as to why Coach Derek Howard is not only an outstanding coach, Derek Howard of Ridgway High School, but more importantly, a leader by example to young men. I was made aware of efforts by individuals to discredit a way of communication to this board, Coach Howard and his program. My experience with my own personal two thousand twenty-two graduate who played for Coach Howard, and equally important, my observations of Coach Howard with the sum of all of the other football student athletes was nothing but positive. I'm a big believer that if we are to turn the ship with respect to these young men, we cannot just invest in our own biological kids. I've said this to Coach Howard in conversations before, that if, if I'm only concerned about my son and he is only concerned about his son, that the math just doesn't add up. Those that know me know that I am a big believer in the village, and he certainly personifies that. We have to impact and have people in front of our kids who care for them enough, have impact and have kids and people in front of our kids who care for them enough to say, "I love you, I believe in you, and because of both, I am willing to give you tough love." I've seen Coach Howard give all three to other young men, including my son. Lots of those other young men, I suspect, perhaps weren't getting that sort of paternal influence that was afforded my son. Coach Howard cares. He invests in himself. As a side note, I once heard a now former coach in the district once say how he saw a very large freshman football player walking home from practice during the summer and during a very hot day. There is no way that Coach Howard would have allowed that young man to walk home after a practice in the heat. Speaking of summer practice, I once mentioned to him how grueling the practice was and that my son would come home and basically collapse in the floor and be basically done for the day, and he told me that that was intentional. The intent was to exhaust the kids to the point that any use of idle time would be a lot more measured and certainly would keep them out of trouble. I've respected that. He is a conscientious steward of young men. I can go on and on with anecdotes, but I'll finish with one. During my son's senior year, class of two thousand twenty-two, the Ridgway football team had double-digit kids.
Mr. Smith? I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind, you, we would love for you to, or email your speech to us.
Sure.
We would be happy to receive that. Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Gage.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a homeschooling mother of five and a military spouse. Our family has loved our time in South Carolina, and we plan to stay for some time. I do have one concern that I wanted to bring to the board tonight. This week, a high school is hosting a gay pride event. This includes a presentation by an advocate from the Harriet Hancock Center, which is an LGBTQ organization dedicated to educating youth ages eleven to seventeen. This does not belong in our public schools. The GSA, or Gay Straight Alliance Group, is hosting these events. Any school group, GSA included, must be sponsored by a teacher. This brings me to my main concern. Why are adult teachers allowed to sponsor a group regarding sexual orientation and gender identity with minors? Why are teachers allowed to post signs on their classroom doors showing their fealty or allyship to the LGBTQ community and take part in student-led pride groups? When I was in school, we didn't discuss sexuality with teachers outside of biology class, yet now students are being openly encouraged to have these discussions in government buildings by teachers who are paid with taxpayer money. Last summer, during the month of June, the district put out a series of tweets educating students on how to use pronouns, be an ally, I'm sorry, and celebrate Pride Month. This absolutely has no place in our schools. Adults other than parents should not be having discussions about sexual orientation with minors, especially in our tax-funded public schools. Would the school host a Bible Day and invite various religious leaders from the community to come and speak? Would they allow Bible passages to be displayed throughout the school? We know the answer to this is no, because it pushes an ideology and worldview that not every student agrees with or feels comfortable with, and frankly, also doesn't belong in government schools. So why is the GSA allowed to use school property, school time, and school resources and money to bring these groups into the school? The district needs to focus on academics and raising test scores rather than allocating time to an ideology that isn't relevant to our children's education. This is not what parents send their children to school to learn. If parents want to have their children be part of these groups, it should be off campus. Yesterday, President Biden declared that there's no such thing as someone else's child. Our nation's children are all our children. To that, I emphatically say no. These are our children, and we fund the public schools. The government doesn't have the right to push ideologies and agendas onto our children, prey upon their vulnerabilities, and put them in a situation for potential abuse. We must protect our children and defend parental rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gage. Next, Michelle Sharon. Mrs. Sharon? And our final speaker this evening will be Mr. Gary Gin.
Thank you all, board, for letting me speak today. I really appreciate y'all and, but I have great concerns. My son attends a public school here in School District Two. And yesterday, as he was having his fourth-period class, we had a band and drums and a parade going through the halls of this school. And this was called No Place For Hate Kickoff Hallway Parade, the last twenty minutes of his fourth period. Well, twenty minutes of his fourth period is this period that he needs most. He needs most attention to where he might be able to graduate. And when you take up school time, as you're supposed to be teaching reading, writing, and arithmetic, sociology, if you're in high school, psychology, and you're teaching No Place For Hate, or SEL, or CRT, or whatever you want to call it today, whichever acronym you want to use, there's no place in that for school. If I want to teach him, and that we should teach our kids to love each other, but you know what? You all want to teach them hate, then that's good. But this is, this is not about me. This is about the kids that have grown up the last four years. They haven't been able to go to school. And now, let's see, Wednesday is late start day. By the way, how many of y'all get to go to work at ten till nine? I've worked all my life, forty years. I've never got to go to work at ten till nine. Y'all are, y'all are teaching them not to get up in the morning. You're teaching them not to do the things that they need to do to succeed in life. You have some structure, you have no structure in School District Two. Going to school, going to school at ten till ten on Wednesday, there is no structure in that whatsoever. Now, all I can say is, on Tuesday, on Thursday, we're going to have a, we're going to have a Pride Day. You know what? My kid doesn't need to go to school on Thursday. He knows all about it. He was in, he was in Washington when, when they were having the riots and stuff about four years, four, five years ago, six years ago. He knows all about that. He doesn't need to be, he doesn't need to have parades and festivals and stuff that indoctrinate him into this stuff. I thank you for your time, but I, you know, y'all have to do something about it, not me.
Thank you, Mr. Gin. Moving on to item seven, voting on executive session items. Do I have a motion for item seven point one? Student admission request into the adult education program.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I move that we approve the student admission requests into the district's adult education program for student number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott to admit student number one into the adult education program. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? And the motion is correct. Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Student appeals. Do I have a motion for student appeals, item seven point two?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to uphold administration's recommendation for student one.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott to uphold administration's recommendation for student number one. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion? Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Item seven point three, breach of contracts.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
For employee number one, I move that we direct the administration not to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash not to report employee number one to the State Department for breach of contract. Any discussion? There's no discussion? And the motion is correct. Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Employee number two?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
For employee number two, I move that we direct the administration not to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash not to report employee number two to the State Department of Education for a breach of contract. Board, is there any discussion? There is no discussion? Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Employee number three?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I move that we direct the administration not to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash to not report employee number three to the Department of Education for a breach of contract. Board members, any discussion? There's no discussion? Dr. Scott, is the motion correct?
It's correct.
Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Employee number four?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
For employee number four, I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash to report employee number four for a breach of contract to the state. Is there any discussion, Board? And the motion is correct? All right, Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item 7.4, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mr. Trapp to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item 7.5, Employment Matter Regarding a Non-Renewal of a Certified Teacher.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp.
I move that we conditionally accept the superintendent's recommendation that the contract of one continuing contract employee not be renewed for the 2023-2024 school year, subject to the Board's duty to review the matter on the merits in a hearing pursuant to South Carolina law.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Board members, is there any discussion? There is no discussion? Mr. Trapp, can you please confirm the motion posted?
Yes, that's correct.
The motion is correct. Board members, please vote. And the vote is five yes, one no, and one abstention. The motion carries. We will now move on to Item 8. Just for the public to know, the Board did not have the opportunity to get to Items 7.6, 7.7, or 7.8, so those will be resumed in our second executive session. So we are now moving on to Item 8, Unfinished Business Action Requested. Mrs. Gregory.
Unfinished Business Action Requested.
So, okay, there will be no discussion. Do I have a motion for the revision approval of Policy JLCE First Aid in Emergency Care?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I move that we approve the revisions to Policy JLCE First Aid in Emergency Care.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to approve the revision approval of Policy JLCE First Aid in Emergency Care. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, Mrs. McFadden, did you say you didn't second it? Oh, okay. There's no discussion? Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item 8.2, Revision Approval, Policy JQ, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I must recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I move that we approve the revisions to Policy JQ, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by, or excuse me, by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Porter to approve the revision approval of Policy JQ, Students' Fees, Fines, and Charges. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion?
I have a discussion.
Yes.
Just for clarity, have we sent anything out to those students who still owe fees, especially our seniors, to make sure they have an opportunity to pay that? Because we know during graduation time, if the fees are not paid, they cannot walk. So if someone can answer that, Mrs. Gregory, or someone from your team, if they can let us know, if seniors are periodically getting something to remind them that, you know, you have this fee, it needs to be paid in order for graduation.
Sure. We can follow up with you on that.
Okay, absolutely.
Just speaking of money and say that. Yes, I said, we can follow up with you on that and get that information for you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Board members, please vote. And the vote is six yes, zero no, one abstention. The motion carries. Item 8.3, Approval Policy IHC Proficiency-Based Credit Courses. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I move that we approve Policy IHC, Proficiency-Based Credit Courses.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Porter to approve Policy IHC. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item 9, Unfinished Business, No Action Requested. Mrs. Gregory.
Item 91, Update on the 2023-24 Budget. Dr. Harry Miley, Senior Chief Finance and Operations Officer, is coming to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. The budget update will be very brief. We still haven't gotten any new numbers from the State Department of Education. The Senate has voted, and we're waiting for the distribution of information from the State Department of Education, what the districts can expect from the budget. So we'll have that probably for the next board meeting. Today, I just wanted to mention two things. One, you asked about the dates for Richmond County Council meetings. I gave that to you. It's a hard copy on your desk. Those are the ones related to the budget. Now, they meet twice. The county council meets a lot, but those are the ones that are related to our budget process. And second, I'm going to update the timeline. I think what we're going to have to do, I'm going to look at it one more time. We think we can get the first reading to you on May the 9th. If the State Department gets us some numbers in the next four or five days, I think we can put a budget together and bring that to you by May the 9th. That would put us at a second reading on May the 23rd, if all goes well. We'll need to post in the paper an advertisement for the legally required public hearing on the 23rd. We'll need to post that, send it to the newspaper, probably on May the 4th, for it to run on Sunday. Then it'll be in the, it's a 15-day requirement. So that all works if we get the information from the State Department within the next four to five days. Any questions about that information?
Mrs. McFadden, did you have a question? I think I mistook Mrs. Gregory raising her glasses for raising your hand. All right, we'll move on to Item 9.2, the update on the ESER funds. Dr. Miley, or Mrs. Gregory.
All right, Dr. Miley.
Thank you. We have several things, and you have a packet of materials, both emailed to you, also on Board Docs, and you have a hard copy tonight, and so we can start going through that. I'll go through the very brief summary that I have on the PowerPoint. What I understood that you wanted was not only kind of in general where we are, but specifically how we are spending the funds. And one of the things I wanted to make sure, and I think we have this information in there, there's a lot of information, a lot of detail in terms of how we're spending it. But one of the things that, kind of over, big picture, is, and we've talked about it briefly in the past, obviously, there were four buckets of money. Each time, we had to put a plan together. Each time, the guidelines of each of the different pots of money outlined what, for instance, the last two that we're currently in, each have 15 different major uses to use. And within those 15, you decide in terms of your district's needs what you want to use the funds for. And each time, we put those plans together, submit them, and then the State Department of Education must approve that plan before we can start spending the money. And the last kind of big picture is that, once they approve that plan, we don't get money until we claim it with documentation. The last ESER III is the most demanding in terms of documentation for reimbursement from the state. So when we spend money for whatever we have in the ESER plans, we spend it first, apply for that reimbursement from the state. We're also audited, we have to file reports quarterly and annually in terms of how we spent that money, whether it aligns with the plan that we got approved, and whether it is aligned with the overall plans of the grants. As you remember, we had four pots. The first ones were really quick in terms of reacting to the Corona pandemic. The first two, first one was the CRF. It was expiring, those funds expired in 9/30/21. We spent all those funds. The second pot was about $4 million, and it expired in 9/30/22. We spent all those funds. The current funding that we're, the program that we're trying to spend is through the end of this, through September 30th, 2023, is the ESER II funding. We think we're going to make it, but we've made an amendment. The information that you have on terms of the expenditures are not through today. I think they're through March 30th, 31st, but we have plans. One of the things, and then we haven't spent, they don't like us to spend ESER III before we spend ESER II. So some of the reasons we haven't spent as much on ESER III is we have not finished spending all of ESER II. One of the problems, I'll tell you right now, not problems, but in terms of expenditures, a lot of the funding we had was for things like nurses' aides, health room aides, interventionists, things like that, that we've had trouble hiring. We advertised, we posted them, tried to recruit, and we've had difficulty filling those positions. That's one of the things that has caused us to not spend as much as we had planned. Our plan right now is to, we think we have ESER II finalized and spent by September 30th, and then we're turning our attention, after we just got an amendment for ESER II last month, we shifted about $1 million from some special ed hiring that we could not fill, and we moved that over to some IT equipment that we could buy. The State Department approved that amendment, and we're in the process of having that. We've ordered it, and we will have it before the end date of 9/30/23. So with that, I wanted to go, the rest of this presentation is relatively straightforward. As I said, we've spent all the funds of the CARES, of the CFR, and the CARES, the second one, we spent all those funds. ESER II allocation was $17.1 million. You see that we've got about 23% remaining balance, and we plan to spend that before September 30th, 23. The ESER III funding, that's the largest funding source. We're spending a lot of it on SOAR, after-school instruction. Again, we've had issues about trying to hire interventionists. We're spending on our tutor, and you can see that information there. There's more detail in the documentation I provided you. Some of the things have been a little bit more problematic. For some of the fixtures and improvements for air quality and things like that, we've had issues with getting approval from not only the SDE for the plan, but we've had problems getting it approved through OSF, the Office of School Facilities, which we didn't think we would really have to have because they weren't building new buildings. They weren't putting up new walls. There were literally things like putting in new air filters, changing out a water fountain to a water filling station, and those things ran into some issues with the State Department of OSF, mostly because of they are just slammed and they are understaffed and with all this construction going on. But nonetheless, that is where we are with that. Here's a very simple graph of how we've generally spent the funds in terms of nursing support, long-term subs. You can see a very large chunk of SOAR. The real key with ESER III, the last and largest piece, was that ESER III also required us to have a public hearing, an input from the public, and two, we had to spend, allocate, and get approved by the plan for at least 20% of the entire allocation to be catching up for learning losses. And so that's what our plan reflects, and that's what our spending pattern reflects. So with that, we're happy to answer any of those broader issue questions, but also, you have, the documents that you have are the entire, we have a financial statement, not a financial statement, but a reporting of the allocations and expenditures to date, but you also have the entire plan that we submitted to the SDE. That's the one that has blue, and some of the things that are in there, our software systems don't match those of the SDE all the time, and so when it prints out, it doesn't always print out all the text, and that's why you'll see in a couple of pages, there's kind of an extra page of full text, since our software system didn't want to print that out. We just printed it out separately and added it as a separate page. So I will be happy to go through this page by page or answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. Board members, questions? Mrs. Washington.
Thank you so much. In the ESER III plan and the document that you handed us with the 218 on the front?
Yes.
If you go to the, let's just take one of the sections, Use of Funds for 1A Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So you have there Instruction Code 100, Support Services Code 200, Community Services Code 300, Other Charges 400, right?
I'm trying to catch up with you. You're on...
I'm in the document that says ESER II.
Oh, ESER II.
Yeah. Yeah, or I'm sorry, ESER III, 218. And it's not numbered by pages, but if you just look at 1A Elementary, Secondary.
I thought you said 1A. No, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
1A, got you. I'm here. Thank you.
So those codes, functions. The reason I'm asking this, so I, I meant to email you my questions ahead of time, so please, I apologize. I don't want you to think that I'm like about to drill you.
No, no, if I can't answer them, I'll send you the answers later.
I want to ask you this because I've, we continue to get this from constituents regarding community services. And that line item that says community services in 300, are we supposed to, is there a, a statute or some type of policy or guidelines in this that says that we have to allocate money to the community for ESER?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. Question?
We would not have had this approved by the State Department if that had been required.
Thank you.
No, we could have. I mean, that's, that's one of the buckets we didn't use. That was one of the uses we did not, you know, it wasn't as high a priority as others.
Okay.
But, yes, ma'am.
But if there are community organizations that fall under some of these 15 categories, is it possible that as a part of our ESER III plan, we could support them? Like, let's just say, for instance, with our McKinney-Vento students, could we possibly provide funds to those families for childcare for children that are not in public school?
I, I don't know. There's several times we've wanted to change something, and we've literally written the State Department and said, can we do this under these guidelines? And they've either said yes or no. And we can certainly, if that is a priority of the district, we can amend this. And again, that's our plan for ESER III. We need to make some amendments to make sure that we can spend as much of this as possible because of, one, all the other funds and all the difficulty in hiring people. So we are open to that. We have time. We, we think that we need to make those amendments and make those decisions within the next, the budget kind of gets in the way this time of year, but we think we should be doing that in the next 30 to 60 days, to make those decisions, change our priorities, make applications to the State Department, and hopefully get approval for those things.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then one more question. So the allocated funds, we're looking at this chart here that's in your presentation. And I see ELA curriculum for grades three through five. I see elementary interventionists, summer SOAR programs. What's in here for our secondary schools?
I believe the some SOAR program is in, is in our secondary schools, correct? Yes, yes.
It is SOAR and Extended Learning Day are all extended through elementary, middle, and high.
Are we seeing the students come to these programs?
That I, I'm probably not as qualified as some of our academics people to answer, but yes, I know we've had enrollment, and we've hired teachers and.
Well, we made some adjustments in things like Extended Learning Day, and we've done a combination of virtual, I believe, and face-to-face because we did not see as many second high school students coming. And so Mrs. Atkinson received feedback, worked with high school principals, and they made adjustments. And I don't know if there's anything, Ms. Atkinson is, is here, if there's anything you'd like to add.
We do need to remember that, that, you know, looking back, it's, it's nice to look back, but at the time, it was rush, 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 do stuff that we've never done before, and get it approved. That's not making excuses. It's just that that is a reality. As these programs were developed, they did need to be amended some to make sure they were more productive.
And we've done, just like you, we've tracked, Dr. Coleman worked with us to make sure we have these students in power schools so that we can track them to see if it is making a difference and if it is working. And Mr. Newton and Mrs. Atkinson have worked very closely with principals and schools to make adjustments. For example, in high school, again, because of the turnout and looking at the needs, we are focusing on SOAR this summer more on ninth grade than 10th through 12th. And again, we've made those adjustments based on data.
And my, I guess my last thing is, for that community, that community service part, can you, can someone from the administration get clarification on how we can utilize those funds?
Yes, ma'am.
Because if we can partner with some organizations that are already in our district that are in our neighborhoods where our children are, if we can get them to do the work, why not give them the funding to do so?
We will, we will look at that.
Thank you.
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mrs. Porter.
I kind of want to piggyback on what Ms. Washington was just saying. I'd like to see if the, if we're having trouble spending some of those funds. Us look into where, those areas where we're not able to hire folks, look for organizations that we can partner with who have the people, because I understand that we don't want to use funds to, for people, because then you have to find how we're going to continue to pay those.
Yes, ma'am.
But if it's a partnering organization, they understand it's temporary. But you can look at social services and our special ed department and look at where their needs are and find some partnering organizations where they can help us out temporarily in some of these pockets and holes that we have. And then also with our middle and high folks, I hear from teachers often that we don't have enough reading recovery materials for our middle and high students. So if there, if there are extra funds in those areas, you know, in possibly surveying those teachers and these departments on how we can use those funds for those areas.
And I think you have the right people behind me that have the expertise, because we, we try not to get into the, oh, this is more priority than this because we don't know. And so if they bring that to us, articulate that, we'll find out if it's, if it's appropriate and authorized by the, by the grant, and we will, we will do the application and get the, get it done.
I can add too that when you're talking about curriculum materials, we have looked at needs, but we'll continue to look at needs. But Mr. Newton worked with elementary schools, elementary teachers for the 3-5 curriculum. You know, we had adopted Open Court or purchased Open Court for the earlier grades, but we knew that we needed something consistent, and it was going to be a long time before the, it has been a long time since the state adopted anything. It's really out of date. We worked with them and went through the selection process, and in part of ESER funds, we used for 3-5.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden. I absolutely agree with my colleagues that we should be partnering with our community leaders, not just businesses, but those who actually work with our students. There's after-school programs everywhere that can't get funding, that can't have, that don't have a building, that are already doing it basically free of charge and keeping our students off, off the streets. Our kids get out of school 3 o'clock. A lot of times, parents don't get off until 5:30, 6 o'clock. There is a time gap right there where they know mom's not going to be home, and that's where our children get into the most trouble and hook up with people who are out there recruiting them to do things they shouldn't do. And this is a part of why we need these programs. So if we could look into that, I'm absolutely on board with that, to keep our children off the street. Just like the gentleman said, he wants those kids so tired when they come home that they fall out, they don't have time to do anything else. So partnering with our communities that already have things in place is what I think that, you know, we should be doing with our ESER funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Any other comments, questions?
If I can just add, a, a large portion of that money, as you see, is going towards SOAR, summer programs at our schools, and also Extended Learning Day programs at our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
And if, as you digest some of this material, please, if you have any questions, just let us know. It is quite a bit of reading, and it'll probably solve any insomnia issues you have, but thank y'all.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. Moving on. Item 10, New Business Action Requested, Strategic Plan Compliance Report. Mrs. Gregory.
Are we skipping the board? All right, mine is numbered differently.
Board, is your, is your agenda reading as mine is? Okay, all right, hers is different, sorry.
Yeah, I need to go by my computer. And for 10-1, New Business Action Requested. And so, a new business action requested strategic plan compliance report. And at this time, I am going to ask to come forward, please, for this. Dr. Jennifer Coleman, who is our Executive Director of R, Accountability, Research, and Evaluation. And she is going to be joined by Mr. Will Simon, who is our Director of Planning. And so this is to talk about our strategic plan.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Gregory, thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight to give you an update on our district strategic plan. We certainly appreciate it. First, let me thank all of you for participating in the planning sessions you had with Dr. Campbell. That was really good, and thank you for being part of that process. So we certainly appreciate that. So our district plan, our, our, our full district plan consists of two parts. Part one is the compliance report that Dr. Coleman is going to go over. That's required to be submitted to the South Carolina Department of Education. It consists of goals that are required by the state along with strategies to accomplish those goals. Part two are those additional components, where we've worked with Dr. Campbell to go beyond what was required of us from the state. And those components include those things that we've given you updates in, in the past, such as our vision for student learning. If you all can recall through some of the updates, we started this entire process last year by listening to students, giving students a voice first. We started that with the very initial part of the process. Those additional components, or that second piece also includes creating a new mission statement. And I think all of you have played a role in that as well, as well as teachers, principals, and a lot of our community partners. It will also include new core values, once again, from our district leadership, from our partners, from our instructional leaders. If you can recall, we also recently worked on the foundations, and so more, more is to come there. And most important is that theory of action. I won't go into that, but if you can recall, that was that process that Dr. Campbell explained to all of you and actually identified or sparked discussions among all of you on what you could do to support the district and what the district could do to support principals, what principals could do to support teachers and educators, and what our educators could do to support our students for, ultimately for our student achievement. So together, the compliance report and the additional components that we're putting together, those components that we've worked on with Dr. Campbell, is going to allow us to have a complete and comprehensive strategic plan. So I just want to kind of give you that update since I know all of you have been working with Dr. Campbell, and then Dr. Coleman is going to present the compliance piece. This gives you an explanation of how we're fitting it all together. Now, Dr. Franklin and I will come back to the board at a later time to share those additional components with all of you. But tonight, I have the honor of turning it over to Dr. Jennifer Coleman to go over compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. All right, so those of you who've worked with me now know I'm a very visual person. So I like a picture, I like a graphic, and I like to draw when I'm explaining things. So this really just kind of illustrates what Mr. Simon was saying, is that there's really two pieces of this process. And the process that you all have been participating in with Dr. Campbell and many, many other stakeholders within our district, that's really the, the roadmap, the strategic plan roadmap. I get the compliance document. It's the less pretty part of this process, right? But it is the process that's required by state statutes that we meet in, for the Department of Education. So just to tell you a little bit about the compliance piece, this is written into state regs, and every five years, every school district in the state of South Carolina has to submit a new strategic plan compliance document. In addition, every school has to submit a school renewal plan. Now, it runs on a five-year cycle. So when you build out this compliance document, you're setting goals that you intend to accomplish over a five-year period. Now, April 30th, regardless what day of the week it falls on, is always, always, always the date that we have to have this turned in. And what happens is then every year, every school has to give an update on their progress towards the goals as well as the district. And from Ms. Gregory, through us presenting this now, we will be beginning to bring annual reports to the board on updating our goals as we move through from the goals that we're setting forth for the district. So there are required parts of this plan based on the statute. The signature pages, and you all have this in board docs, the assurances pages, stakeholder involvement, the plan waivers. I do just want to say one quick thing about this. The last couple of board meetings, you all have given approval for waivers. The way that it has to work is the state first has to approve this strategic plan. Then we can submit the waivers for state Board of Education approval. But that is why in the packet now, it appears we don't have waivers because we currently don't have any. But we will be submitting the ones that you all have approved in the last two meetings. The needs assessment data is really what everything should be built on for the compliance document in the strategic plan. This was pretty easy for us. This is a, a data dive in district. We are constantly in our data. We know where we're at. We know where our weaknesses are. And that is what the goals that we're going to present this evening have been written for. There is an executive summary of the needs assessment, the performance goals and action plans, and this is where the, the meat is at, on number seven. And that's what I want to share with you tonight, are the goals that we are proposing that we submit to the state for the district based on the analysis of our data. In addition, the literacy plan is included in your document. I do want to note, this has already been approved by the state. It's submitted every October by the district, but we're just required to attach it on to the strategic plan compliance document when we submit it every April. Okay, so there are five requirements for goals that we have to submit to the state in this compliance document. You must have one academic goal. We are an institution of learning, so we're going to have more than one academic goal, but there is a requirement to have at least one. There's a requirement to have a teacher-admin quality goal. There is a requirement to have one school climate goal. It is a requirement for the district, but not the schools, to have two gifted and talented goals. And because we do have schools that were designated as ATSI, which we will have a presentation on later in this meeting, we were required to write an ATSI goal into our strategic plan compliance document. So we have on the screen, there are 12 goals that we are proposing that the district have in their compliance document. These are things that have come about through the presentations we've given over the past 12 to 24 months, looking at the impact that the pandemic had on our learners and where we know we need to solidify and move our district forward. We've talked a lot, you'll see the first goal, and one thing I want to note is that all of the goals are going to be written similarly, because the goal should, the intent is for the SMART goal to be accomplished by 2028, which would be the last of the five years of our strategic plan compliance document. So one of our academic goals, and we have talked about this at previous meetings, is concentrating on reading in our first and second grade students. We do know that we've seen declines post-pandemic of the reading ability of our, our youngest learners. You can see that we've got a goal for elementary students for SE-ready ELA. We also have one for elementary students in math. We have one for middle school students in ELA and middle school in math. So one of the questions I get asked a lot is, well, why in the world did you break this down into four goals? You could have just made it two goals, looking at grades three through eight. That really sometimes masks issues. So one thing we want to do is we want to ensure that we're breaking it apart by level so that we can identify where we may be having different issues at different levels. You can see, and we've talked about this in board meetings, that we are concerned about the percent of students passing our Algebra I ECEP exam, so that is on there. We put English II on here as well. Now, I will say, we're doing okay with our passage rate on English II, but we would like to see more students passing that exam with a C or higher, and we feel that we can do that. Now, quite frankly, that's probably a goal that we will aspire to for Algebra I once we get over this first hurdle. So if we think about it incrementally, we're climbing out. And so that's why you'll notice the difference in Algebra I being an increase in passage rate, but English II being an increase in C or higher. Okay, so those are the academic goals. Now. Now, we have a, there's a category in the compliance document called district priority. This one, there wasn't even, there was zero discussion about this. We have to get our graduation rate up. That is a district priority. And that is a priority that filters all the way down to those first graders that we're concerned about with their reading skills now, right? So everything that we're doing should be leading to the ultimate indicator of success, which is graduation rate from our institution. So we do have that listed as a district priority. Another district priority that's very important to us is the CCR, the College or Career Readiness. We've presented these numbers before. There were some COVID impacts. We really feel that we can get this higher. This is one that I hold very near and dear because this one honors whatever path children take, right? So for your college-bound kids, for your career-bound kids, for your military kids, this is reflected in there. So this really is us preparing all students for whatever their next chapter is once they graduate from us. So I mentioned we're required to have a teacher-admin quality goal. And the district would like to have a goal that all of our schools by 2028 will have an avid distinction of certified or higher. The district has invested in this program. We believe it's very beneficial for students. And we believe that it also helps our teachers and our administrators as well. There was also a requirement to have a school climate goal. We decided that we were going to look at the school climate surveys given to our students every year by the Education Oversight Committee. And there's one specific area that looks at the social and physical environment of the building. And those things function around safety, security, cleanliness of the building, and a feeling of belonging. Those are all things that are very core to who we are as an organization. And they're, they're things that have, have taken a bit of a hit in the last couple of years. So we want to make sure that we're focusing on that. And of course, the last goal, which is required by the state, and we'll discuss this one in more detail in the next presentation. We do have seven schools identified as ATI schools in 2022. And we want all seven of them off of that list before the end of the strategic plan. So those are the 12 goals that the district has collaboratively worked on based on our data as areas that we need to improve. The last thing that I'll say before I wrap this up is, what we've really, what we're striving for is alignment, alignment between the district and our schools. So we presented these goals to our principals. And for their school renewal plans, their goals are the same as the district, as they should be. If we're going to function as a system and as a unit, we should all have the same goals. Now, their numbers are different. Because their beginning number, moving it from point A to point B, is going to be different than the district. But one thing that I think is going to be a real benefit for us as an organization is that they're all aligned. So the school renewal plans are all aligned with the district strategic compliance document. That's it, and I'll be glad to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman, Board members. Questions? There are no questions? This is, Mrs. Gregory, did you have a comment?
I just want to comment, thank you for sharing and bringing that connection between our work with Dr. Campbell that Dr. Franklin has been sharing, and also a great job with our compliance report. We want to just make sure that we are transparent, and we've talked to y'all about tracking that, as Dr. Coleman shared. And again, we feel like this is a big step with the alignment and transparency. So thank you very much.
Thank you both. And Board, this is a action requested. Do I have a motion to pass the strategic plan compliance report?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
Give me just a moment to find it. Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I'll make a motion that we pass the strategic plan compliance report.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Porter to approve the strategic plan compliance report. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion. And the motion is correct. Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes, or carries. Moving on to 11, no action requested, new business. 11.1, discussion on policy BID, Board Member Compensation and Expenses.
Madam Chair.
Is that Mrs. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, Dr. Franklin is at the podium to help us with, starting with discussion on policy BID, Board Member Compensation and Expenses.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Madam Chair, members of the Board. At the Board's retreat a couple of months ago, it was requested that District Administration bring this policy for discussion among the Board. And so what we will do is yield to the Board for discussion on the policy, not necessarily where to insert or delete the words, but just kind of articulating what you would like to see in the policy. And then District Administration will take that back and do the wordsmithing, and then bring it back to the Board for first reading. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Board members, any suggestions or recommendations?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I, in the second paragraph, I do not think that we need to list out all of the official business by the Board. I believe we have, we are elected officials. We are able to look at a conference and be able to tell if this conference goes along with our duties. I do not think Board approval is required for attending meetings, conferences, or seminars hosted by an organization.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Dr. Scott?
Yes, Madam Chair. Basically, if you go to the second paragraph, and at a period after official business of the Board, that would just delete everything else in that paragraph.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I like that suggestion.
Yes. And I do have just a few other recommendations. If you go to the fourth paragraph, I would like to remove where it says, remove this up in regards to advancements which Board members are not allowed to receive. I would like to remove that. And also, I would like to add where it says Board Members Will Be Reimbursed, that's still that same paragraph, the fifth line, that Board Members Will Be Reimbursed of All Expenses Within Five to Seven Business Days of Returning Back With Receipts.
Mrs. Nash, I see that Mrs. McFadden has her microphone on.
Oh, it's just.
Oh, okay. Oh, Dr. Scott still has suggestions.
And then also, I would like to add a line that Board Members Will Receive Advances for miles, mileage, airport parking, travel, transportation to and from.
Dr. Scott, you're all set? Okay, Mrs. Porter.
The five to seven business days, if that doesn't fall on a day where the Finance Department is cutting checks, does that cause a problem for them?
I'm not sure about that. But what I do know is that the Finance Department can cut checks at any time, and we're not employees, so we don't have to wait for the designated date for that. And then also, you guys served on the IG report. As you noticed on the IG report, it stated that it should be within seven to 10 days. So that may not fall as well.
Mrs. Porter, do you have additional questions?
No.
And I, anybody else before I speak?
I do, actually.
Okay, Mrs. McFadden.
And so does the Board, I guess our meetings and our travel and everything, does it run on the fiscal year or does it run on the calendar year?
It's the fiscal.
Yeah.
Fiscal year.
Travel's on fiscal year, but our pay starts in January, and it goes that way. It starts in a calendar year.
The compensation is calendar year, correct?
The travel reimbursement would be out of the fiscal budget, the budget of the fiscal year we're in. So it's based on the fiscal year. If you're asking about the compensation for meeting, the per diem, that's a state law that says it's on a calendar year.
Okay, thank you so much.
Dr. Miley, will you stay up here? Because my questions are going to need your, your comments, I believe. Anybody else have any questions before I ask? Well, I'm going to make a couple of comments. I'm not in agreement with the cash advanced. I like that we're not getting it. That seemed to get us in a little bit of trouble or some questions. And I'd like to rather not have any red flags go up and be, you know, as squeaky clean as possible. And also, I am not in agreement with having it done in five to seven days. I know that the IG recommended, I believe it was seven to 10 days. But our report, our committee, and Mrs. Washington might be able to speak to this more specifically. The recommendation from the IG committee was to follow the fee schedule that you gave to us, which is twice, I believe it's twice a month. Is that not correct?
We normally, we try to keep AP, these all, travel reimbursement comes out of Accounts Payover Department, and we make check runs twice a month. And so that's, that's our normal process. We stay pretty busy doing that. There are a lot of districts that pay once a month. And so we pay twice a month to our vendors and to anyone else, and reimbursing employees and Board in terms of travel. So, yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, it's not very often if you get your, your money in, it's, or your receipts in, your expenses in, it's not very often that you're going to go over, like, every two weeks, or it might be 21 days, like, at the worst-case scenario. But generally, you're going to get it within two weeks?
We try to. I mean, there are times that, for instance, if someone has inadvertently made a mistake on their, on the, on the date, on the sheet, then we have to call them, or just, you know, document that. But some, most of the time, it's well within the two week, two check runs a month. But again, we will, we will do what the Board wishes. It will, we stay pretty busy as we are, as we do. So our team does very well, and they work very hard. But we will do what the policy says.
All right, thank you, Dr. Miley. Any other questions, Board members? All right. We will move on to the revision of policy BEDB, Board Agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a suggestion for the first paragraph, where it states, "One additional Board Member May Attend Each Agenda Setting Meeting." The Board Chairman will develop a schedule whereby each Board Member is extended the opportunity to attend at least three agenda meetings. I would like to remove the three and said, "extended the opportunity to attend" meetings as long as there is no quorum.
So what you're, basically what you're wanting to do is open it up to three, three Board Members attending a?
If they choose to, because most of the time, Board Members are not going to attend. But I don't want it being limited to three, only three meetings that they can attend for the year, because they can attend as many as they choose to as long as there is no form, no quorum.
And I, I see your point. I don't want to limit, you know, at least three. I, I would, in what I'm saying, the three, attending three agenda meetings. I am a little bit concerned about having too many people in the room. I would love to have at least one more additional Board Member, you know, setting the agenda, but getting three people in. Sometimes there are a lot of differing opinions. And just to, to sort of condense the process, I like the idea of having one additional Board Member in there. And that's what we did talk about at the workshop at our first meeting, seemed to be the consensus to have two people in there from the Board.
And really, having someone in there, they're not making the agenda. They're just in there listening. Because the agenda is created by the Board Chair and the Superintendent. So that second or third person shouldn't be in there dictating what goes on the agenda. It should only be the Superintendent and the Board Chair. That person is only in there just as a support and an ear. Hopefully, I hope that's what that person is doing. And once again, as elective officials and Board Members, no one should be able to tell us that we cannot come into these meetings. These meetings are open to Board Members as long as there's not a quorum. Serving on this Board for 10 years, Board Members have always, and even some of these Board Members that's here now, have attended Board Meetings. And it was never an issue. So I don't think we should be limited to three or two or one. We should be able to go anytime we feel the need as an ear, not someone who's dictating what goes on, on the agenda. So I would still like to make my recommendation that Board Members can attend unlimited as long as there is no quorum. And once again, very seldom do you see a second or a third Board Member attending these agenda meetings because they're doing the day and most of them are working. So it's not, and then to, I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Agostini. But also, your term is up in just a couple of months. So the new Board Chair may not have a problem with that. So I would like to see that moved forward if it's the will of the Board.
Yeah, and if it's the will of the Board, that's fine. My understanding of why additional Board Members wanted to attend the meeting was to actually have input, not to, you know, be a bystander, but to actually actively be involved in the agenda-setting meeting. That's been my understanding since the, you know, the initiation of this change. So again, it's the will of the Board. If the Board would like to change it again. I am finished here in this seat, June 27th, and somebody else can take over.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
Okay, sorry, okay. In para, let's see, here's the fourth paragraph, starting with additionally. I personally would like to strike all the first five lines and the first part of the sixth line where it says, "Agenda." And the reason being is, we have a hard enough time getting things on the agenda as Board Members. And we're going to be here probably till 10 and 12 o'clock at night.
Just to clarify, I don't know where you're looking. I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm trying to figure additionally.
The fourth paragraph, starting with additionally. To strike the, and we have where we're having a hard time getting things on the agenda as it is. And if the goal, if the Board is focused on goals that we have, then, you know, of course, we want public input. But we do have public sessions for that reason. In case something arises that's very, very important, then we can add it. But having focused goals, we are not going to be able to just add a bunch of things. And I also believe that the portion where the staff, we have a Superintendent who is also being a part of that process and, you know, would be taking those suggestions from the Superintendent, giving those suggestions to the Superintendent.
And I'll just, you know, my, my comments regarding that are, the staff currently does already input, so it should be on there. I mean, that's part of the practice. Mrs. Gregory sits down with her Cabinet and Executive Committee and asks, you know, a lot of our Board meetings in our agendas, the Board Members have asked, you know, how did this get on? There's business that we need to take care of as a Board that might not have been presented or come up. But there are items that we do need to vote on as a Board to continue to have this district run. And just for, while I've been on the Board, I only can recall one member in the community ever submitting agenda request. It's not that frequent. But, you know, for transparency and input, we are representing our constituents. I think it's important for us to continue to have this in our policy.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I'd like to speak to that. That is true, that we are for transparency reasons. That, again, that is why we do have where people can come and also speak. And I'm glad you bring up transparency, because that is something that we should be discussing. And that is also why, when I asked for this to be on the agenda, and everyone saw that it was on the agenda, then it became, I believe it was you, who acted as if you didn't know why this was on here. And I'm just gonna say that when you put it out there, we're gonna have an overwhelming amount, but let's just say what board meetings are for. It is for board business, and yes, there will be those things, but there are a lot of things that we're supposed to be focused on, which was education, that was also put in the IG report, and the everyday things having to do with the issues that our school is facing, learning gap loss, all of these things, behavioral issues. And we have had so many policies that probably could have been spread out over a better course of time, which we have requested in order for us to have, one, not these really long meetings where the public is not gonna be able to stay awake for all of this, and second, for, to us to have some clarity on where we're headed and where we're going, and to focus on the things that we said in that workshop and said that we were gonna do. And going into 2024, we should have clear goals. And if those things that come up are not in those clear goals and values, I might add, then we don't need to be doing those things at that time.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
Yes. Also, I would like to suggest that we remove the entire number two, because board members have the opportunity to add to the agenda at our board meetings. They can make a motion that we add an item. So I just think it's redundant to make a motion to add an item and then have to go back and submit a written request to the board chairman with a copy from the superintendent. So I would like to see number two deleted totally.
May I speak to that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
In the conversation that the board had at the retreat, there was a
Right.
comment about, and these are my words, not, not yours, about the voice of the minority on the board not being heard. And so District Administration just listed it as a suggestion to give the full board two ways of getting an item on the agenda, either in the context of a, of a meeting by making a motion and it's approved by the majority of the board, or if over the course of the fiscal year, the same item is requested by three different board members, and at that time, it goes on the, on the agenda. So it was just our suggestion for having a way to also have the voice of the minority heard as it relates to the agenda.
Dr. Franklin, I appreciate that, but with your, with the suggestion that you're giving, I totally agree, but two, we'll have someone on the board come into a meeting saying, "Oh, I didn't know, we had a secret meeting that people were talking and came up with this." So I would rather us be transparent and submit that motion in the public where people can see, so no one would think someone is having a secret meeting, and two or three people have gotten together, decided they want to do this, and didn't include them on the so-called secret meeting. I think this is very transparent, this way of just eliminating that. You have something that you want to put, you make your motion at the meeting, or if it's a meeting that you can't attend, of course, send your information because you're not at that meeting. But to have two or three voices to come together, that may be considered a secret meeting to some.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I agree with Dr. Scott in the fact of the three meetings. However, I do think that if you make a motion at a meeting, that you need to follow up in writing just so that there is a record and it's not forgotten or lost.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I also agree with keeping the number two suggestion there, with it being stated over and over again, at least, well, at least three times throughout the year, that it being a possible agenda item, because if it is stated in public, whether it be in public or not, and multiple board members don't want it on the agenda, it could possibly never be put on the agenda. What I like about that second paragraph is it says, if it's stated three times in the fiscal year, it will be added to a future agenda, and that's not stated in number one. In number one, you can state that you want something on the agenda and it never be put on the agenda, and you're completely overlooked. But I remember when I was sitting in the community in the chair in the same situation for that line item number two about the written requests, and I remember watching Ms. Agostini and Dr. Scott constantly saying that they wanted items on the agenda, and other board members not paying attention to their voice and how they wanted items on the agenda, and they had no one speaking for them. I remember sitting in that chair, watching them say that, and at that point in time, they were supportive of that.
Let me just be clear. What do you mean supportive? I am supportive. That's why I said, "Let's be transparent," since you wanna call by names. That's why I said, "Let's be transparent and make the motion out here so people can see," because when you run into number two, you can have three people to send something to the chair, and how do we know that it's been submitted three times? Because we won't get that information. So that's not transparent. The chair could say, "Only one person asked for this," or "Only two people asked for this." So how would we know when three people have asked for something?
It's called a paper trail.
Uh-uh, wait a second. When you call my name, make sure that you are talking about the truth and what you know about. Don't, don't add anything to that. So be careful when you call my name, okay?
Mrs. Porter, did you have additional comments?
I said what I said.
Okay, no, and I concur with Mrs. Porter that, you know, I, I sat on the board and for a year struggled to get anything put on the agenda. So when you're a minority and not that, because item number one says that the motion is favorably approved by the board, you need at least four people to support that. So I do not have a problem with, you know, emails coming in and fellow colleagues calling other people and, you know, trying to build consensus or to get board members to, you know, vest in an interest of having something put on the agenda, so, and they're not secret meetings when we call each other individually to have conversations. So I would love to see item number two remain on this policy.
And Mrs. Agostini, I totally agree with you about they're not secret meetings. But they have been, Mrs. Porter, for one, like to say, when people have gotten together two or three, that you've had a secret meeting. And that's why I said, just so that image won't look like there's a secret meeting, we need to be careful and transparent about how we do things, so it won't be perceived as a secret meeting. So I totally understand.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. At this point, I'm wondering if we've built, oh, Mr. Trapp.
Do I just wanna make one quick comment? I mean, realistically, the conversation we're having right now, number one allows the majority to have a voice, and number two allows the minority to have a voice. It's just that simple. If we, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm not a fan of number two, but I am obligated to point out that if there are three people in here that wish to have their voice heard, number two guarantees that they can have their voice heard. Number one guarantees that the majority will always be heard, and that goes without saying. And as far as being able to submit something right into the chair and wondering if it's being honestly reported, well, I would really suggest that we make sure that we always elect someone as our chairman that's honest. And anyway, that's, I'm not, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm just saying, realistically, there, there comes a point in time when we have to trust someone. If we don't trust someone, we really shouldn't appoint him as, as chairman. Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Any more conversation? All right. We will move on to policy BBD, Board Member Removal From Office.
On this policy, Madam Chair, members of the board, it comes out of the 2022 legislative session where the governor put in place a process by which board members can be removed from office, and basically the content of the policy is almost the law verbatim. District Administration has no additional recommendations for the policy.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Board members, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
The only thing I'd like to say is, I think this is a great policy. It is state law, so whether we adopt this policy or not, it's state law, and state law trumps any policy that we have. So I still don't understand the purpose of adding this to our policies when it's a state law. Are we gonna go back and add all of the state law policies now to our policies? Because if we're adding one, why aren't we adding the other thousands to it? So I'll just leave it at that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
If, if I may add, I, I agree with Dr. Scott completely on this particular subject. The only value I see in this policy is, quite honestly, there are people that, I don't know who else on the board, they've worked over with emails, but they have emailed some of us suggesting that we make moves to remove people from the board that they don't like. And quite honestly, this gives us an opportunity to say, "Well, here's the board policy governing the removal of board members. Call your elected officials on the state level." So that, that's the only value to it, is it allows us to point someone to it a little easier, but I am not a fan of it by any means.
Do any other board members have comments?
Well, I just wanted to add to that, and thank you, Mr. Trapp, for that. But again, even having these policy, board members can't remove other board members, so it defeats the purpose. If all the board members up here wanted to remove me, anyway, they couldn't do it because this is a state policy. Board members cannot remove other board members. I think if that was possible, a lot would have been removed a long time ago.
All right, thank you, Dr. Scott. Did, Mrs. McFadden, did you have something to share?
No, I didn't have my button pushed.
Oh, okay. No, and I'm sorry, just sometimes when you're looking at me, I think that you wanna speak. But, no, my, my comments on this, I would love to see our board adopt this as policy, and it goes to Mr. Trapp's issue of, people in the community have periodically, you know, sent emails wanting to remove one board member or another, not liking them, and it's great to have a reference point so that we can share to our constituents, you know, that this is a state statute and that only the governor can remove a board member. I know a few years ago, when I was new to the board, I wondered if it was possible, and we really didn't, you know, it, it took a lot of work to find out that, you know, how the process works. So it would be nice to have it there for, as a reminder after this, you know, because this was a big subject last year in the General Assembly, and it, you know, got a lot of attention. But once the buzz dies down about this, at least we still have it in our policy manuals so that we can refer our constituents or our fellow board colleagues, you know, to the policy.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I also believe that even our media can get confused, and they look up policy member, policy numbers for, or policies about staff members when they have issues with board members, and they often quote, not conduct of employees, and they don't realize that we're not considered employees. And I've seen that written in publications and in regards to conduct of board members. And this one right here is specifically in regards to board members and not staff employees in the district. So it's another way to provide clarification and not have a misrepresentation.
Thank you, or, Mrs. Porter. Any other comments? Thank you so much, Dr. Franklin. Item 11.4, Report School Designations. Mrs. Gregory.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Agostini. 11.4, the Report on School Designations. Dr. Jennifer Coleman, Executive Director of Accountability, Research and Evaluation, will lead this conversation, along with support from Ms. Katania Davis, Chief Special Services Officer, Mr. Arthur Newton, Executive Director for Elementary Instruction, and Ms. Penny Atkinson, Executive Director for Secondary Instruction. Dr. Coleman.
Good evening again. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the designations that came down both from state designation and federal designations for our district. So let's kind of start with some basics. Why do we even have state and federal designations? Many of you remember when No Child Left Behind came out, and I always kind of measure it 'cause my now 19-year-old, I was pregnant then, so that was quite some time ago. That was the first time we really had federal accountability. However, the state of South Carolina has always had an Accountability Act going back to 1998, and we've always had some type of a report card. So as a state, we've really been ahead of the game as far as ensuring that there is accountability at our schools. So we really have two different levels of designations. One comes from state designations, which we'll talk through, and then some are part of the federal Every Student Succeeds Act. And then those are requirements from the federal government that if schools don't meet certain thresholds, they must be provided support from the State Department of Education. And as many of you know, in this state, we have two governing organizations that oversee public education, the Education Oversight Committee, as well as the State Department of Education. For both of these designations, they work in concert with one another as they're being determined. So this is a newer one. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time on this. In 2021, the General Assembly passed H. 3610, and it was new for our state, although quite frankly, for some of you that have been around for a while, a lot of this language came from some different bills in the past that we've had before, but it had us to point out schools that they deemed to be underperforming. And their definition of an underperforming school comes from that state report card rating, and if we had a school that was below average or unsatisfactory, the state would then deem them underperforming. We do have two high schools that are on this designation list. Now, the minute that we knew that this was happening, we began furiously calling the state to find out exactly what we needed to do. We knew in both of these cases that we had work to do, so there was not, it was not that work was not already being done, but we really wanted to hear more about what this new bill meant for us as a district, for you all as a board. The, what we have been told from the State Department is, us and other districts have been told, is that the General Assembly has given them about a year to flesh out how this thing's gonna work. But there are things written into the bill that I do want you to be aware of, things such as having to write a turnaround plan, we've heard that term before, Dr. Scott, turnaround plans, doing parental notification, that's also been a part of previous bills in the state of South Carolina, and rewriting and modifying your school renewal plan. Again, we have said, we've acknowledged to the state, we have a couple of schools on this list, what do we need to do? We've been told to hang tight until the next cycle comes, and then the State Department will provide us more instructions on actions. Now, let me just say, that doesn't mean we haven't been working with these schools. That has been something that is ongoing. Now, one of the reasons that the state wants to kind of hang tight on this one is last, last week, this week? Last week, at our state meeting, the Education Oversight Committee did tell us that they are submitting an amendment to the federal government for the accountability system for high schools. So we've talked in the past that the high school report card ratings are a little weird because they're lagging indicators. They take all the seniors who are graduating and go back and find any end-of-course test they've taken anywhere in the state of South Carolina, and they score you on that. That makes it really hard to work on improvement when you're working from scores that are sometimes two, three, four, five, six, if those kids took Algebra I in seventh grade, years old. So I'm really excited that the State Department of Education and the Education Oversight Committee has said, "We really have to fix this thing," because the, the reflection of the rating of the school should reflect what happened in that school in that calendar year. Now, it's not been approved yet, but we are waiting to hear, and we do hope that this will go forward. We think it'll be a much more fair representation of what's happening in this, our schools. It also may undo some of the designations that we currently have when they get that approved, hopefully. And so I do think Ms. Atkinson is going to address a little bit. As I mentioned, we were already doing work with these two schools on this list, with all of our schools, but she'll speak specifically to, to things we're doing for the two underperforming high schools.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Ms. Gregory, as Dr. Coleman said, once we started getting information from the state that we possibly would have two of our high schools listed as underperforming, we started working on things, and we started tightening things up. We are going to continue to support our schools with professional development opportunities for our teachers and our leaders. I have shared with you that we are wrapping up our second Theory to Practice Cohort for Algebra Teachers, and remember, algebra, foundations of algebra and intermediate algebra, those are the two groups that take the end-of-course exam, which counts on the high school report card. We are in our first cohort of reading apprenticeship, which goes along with English I, our students that are in the seminar section. They are ready for English I, they can read words, but perhaps needs help with, they need help with comprehension. We are just midway through our first year of implementation of that professional development. We are working right now on our second cohort to continue the reading apprenticeship. We are working right now on our second cohort to continue the reading apprenticeship. Now, remember, English I is no longer an EOC course. English II is the EOC course. But we want to get our students stronger in English I and in reading seminar so that our English II scores will hopefully see a bounce. So those are two professional learning opportunities we are continuing to offer our teachers. Thirdly, we are continuing with our formative assessment conversations specifically around our end-of-course examination courses, U.S. History, Biology, Algebra, as I just mentioned, and English II. I will remind you that we are going into new biology standards for 2324. So we will have a new biology assessment for 2324. This year has been our bridge year to implement the new biology standards, and next year, they will be fully implemented. Our science content specialist has been meeting with our biology teachers once a month at each of the high schools, showing them where the current biology standards and the new biology standards already are linked together. And talking about areas where perhaps we have taught for 10 years, we're now going to drop that standard because it's being replaced with another standard. We also were looking at perhaps offering some sort of theory to practice for our biology teachers moving forward. We're going to continue, of course, with our classroom observations. But the most important part of those observations are those coaching conversations that follow up with teachers. Our content specialists do that. Our principals, our assistant principals for APIs also do that because we want our teachers to know we're not there just to give them a score. We're there to coach them along and improve their craft. We're going to also continue to support our school leadership teams. We have three data conversations a year. This year, we added specific SMART goals, and those SMART goals are built around graduation rate and their end-of-course data. And those have gone very well. We have completed two of those and will begin the third one for the secondary schools after state testing is over. We are going to continue to have formative conversations with our administrative teams around their end-of-course programs. What are they seeing in their observations? What are they seeing in their benchmark data? What are they seeing when they get their scores back? And are they talking to their teachers? Are they asking us for the support they believe their teachers need? So when students take it the next semester, we will see increases. And of course, calibration opportunities where the secondary academic team goes in with the school leadership team and we do observations together and then we coach each other on what we see and how can we each get better by helping them. And lastly, our two high schools that are on the underperforming school list have made a decision to move to a true four-by-four schedule for the 2324 school year. Both of those schools are very excited about that. Students will have four classes first semester, four classes second semester. There will be less transition. There will be longer periods of instruction, and we believe this is going to help us. We are already talking about professional opportunities for our teachers that perhaps have never taught on a four-by-four block. But those are the things we have been doing and are going to continue to do. Dr. Coleman.
Okay, so that summarizes the state designations. Now, we're going to move on to federal designations. And again, these come from the Every Student Succeeds Act. So these are federally mandated that all states must identify schools in these three areas. So CSI schools or comprehensive support schools are defined as Title I schools that are performing at or below the fifth percentile of all Title I schools in the state. Here's the good news. We don't have any schools on this list. Priority schools, they're defined as being schools, whether they're Title I or not, who are in the lowest 10th percentile of all schools in the state. Good news is, we have no schools on that list. Where we did have some schools identified this year was on ATSI. This is where I want my chart paper so I can draw my pictures. Okay. So as we've talked about in some of our small groups, what happens with ATSI is they line up all of the elementary schools. Let me go to my graphic. At least I can pretend I'm drawing on my chart paper. They line up all the elementary schools in the state and that line that you see there, let's pretend that that's the lowest 5% of schools based on their overall report card rating, okay? What they then do for ATSI is the federally mandated subgroups. So those are our ethnic subgroups, our pupils in poverty, our special education, our multilingual learners. They take each of the subgroup and say, does your subgroup score, is it lower than the lowest, the school who is at the lowest fifth percentile statewide? I'm going to say that one more time because it is complex. So we line up all the elementary schools in the state. And let's say at that red line is Jennifer Coleman Elementary School because my school's overall score is the lowest score in the fifth percentile lowest in the state. Now, for every other school, from Arthur Newton Elementary School, from Penny Atkinson Elementary School, they're going to look at all the subgroups in their school and say, do any of the federally mandated subgroups score lower than the overall score at Jennifer Coleman Elementary School? Okay? And that's how you can become identified as an ATSI school. In Richland II, we had seven schools identified as ATSI schools through the subgroup of students with disabilities. So that means that at these seven schools, the subgroup of special education students scored lower than the lowest fifth percentile school in the state. Have to make sure to take a breath when I say that. Okay. All right. So there's a couple of things that we noticed statewide. Post-pandemic, there were huge increases in identifications. You can speak with people at the State Department. 43% of schools in the state were identified. We have never been in that space before as a state. The vast majority of these schools that were identified through ATSI, it was for the special education subgroup. So I think I've, this, it's unsettling as the mom of a kid in that subgroup, right? When you start to hear of things like this. We do know if you look at national research that certain subgroups were hit harder during the pandemic. This was one of them. We also know that internally, if you look at Richland II data, we had 12,000 kids who their parents opted for them to remain virtual once it was a choice to come back. We know that a large portion of those students happened to be students with special needs and who required special services. So not an excuse at all, but just some of the realities that we're dealing with and some of the things that we're seeing statewide are mimicked here in those seven schools. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Davis with the more important part, which is what are we going to do about it now?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Gregory. Before we even knew that we had students identified in ATSI, this school year, we had started implementing some new things for special education. And as Dr. Coleman said, it's personal and even for me, it's personal not only in my role as Chief of Special Ed. So it's important that we get it right. We implemented a curriculum matrix because we wanted to ensure that all the teachers within our district are utilizing evidence-based, research-based curriculum across the system and that it's consistent and that they're implementing it with fidelity. So we have a clear system. We've shared it with our principals. They know exactly what the teachers should be using in their classroom. In addition, using some of our ESAR funds and some additional positions granted by the board, we've been able to put in place disability specialists who are able to be out in the classrooms working hand-in-hand with our veteran seasoned teachers, instructional coaches to work with our first and second young teachers. And also, very important, board-certified behavior analysts who have taken great work to get certified in working with students who have very unique behavioral challenges and they're in the classrooms because if you are unable to attend, it is very difficult for your teacher to provide you quality instruction. In addition, following our receiving information regarding ATSI, we immediately conducted some structured observations by my team in addition to what we normally do because we wanted to get some different people in classrooms that maybe they have not, from my team, visited before because it's not their particular disability area. We wanted to put some new eyes in those classrooms to get a different perspective and ensure we were implementing the curriculum with fidelity and that we were following best practices as special educators. We added on to the quarterly data conversations that we already do with Ms. Atkinson and Mr. Newton. We added one special for the seven schools where we focused on making sure that our schools are prioritizing placement of students with disabilities in general education classrooms with veteran and master teachers, that our schools are disaggregating the SPED data at all levels and ensuring they're doing a deeper dive, and that school administrators are making consistent observations and visits in special ed classrooms. In addition, our academics leadership team, we reviewed and met with several consultants regarding co-teaching. And we've made a decision to move forward as a systemic approach to address this matter by securing a consultant to provide professional development, develop a plan for implementation, and the consultant would assist us with monitoring this work over time. And we're also going to look at from the special ed team, ensuring that and increasing the use of assistive technology. And by assistive technology, I mean ensuring that our classrooms are using audiobooks for students who are struggling with reading, dictation devices for our students that may have difficulties with writing because they can use these devices on some of the assessments. That they're also using personal listening devices if they have auditory processing difficulties and adding any additional manipulatives, whether hands-on or virtual, in the classrooms for mathematics. Finally, we're going to work with our administrators, ensuring they understand what specially-designed instruction looks like for special education students. It's a little bit different than what you would see in a general education classroom. The approaches are different. So we want to make sure our administrators in our school buildings understand what to look for. And we actually started that professional development during principals' meetings back in March. We're also going to work with them on IP development and creating additional opportunities for students with disabilities to access the general education curriculum. And so that will be our beginning approach as we continue to work with our parents and our teachers and administrators. I'm sure we'll be adding on additional items. We're still early on in the process to work with our schools to specifically address these needs. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Arthur Newton, who is working closely with us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, other distinguished board members, and Ms. Gregory. As Ms. Davis has already stated, this is something we've always been working on. So we will continue to collaborate special ed division regarding specific needs and resources. For example, our content specialists will work with teachers as teams, one-on-one, model for them, as well as provide any resources or training that they need. We'll continue to provide ongoing professional development opportunities for our general education teachers and SPED teachers because there needs to be a collaboration between the two because they share children and they could have some congruency when we start looking at best practices. Also, we will continue to provide Orton-Gillingham training. We started this about three, three years ago and we started, actually started out with our SPED teachers, our content specialists, as well as some of our teachers and interventionists. If you're familiar with it, it's a multi-sensory structured literacy approach. It's not a curriculum. For example, you could see students with trays that have sand, and sand may be the different color than the tray as they draw their letters so they can identify their letters more easily. That's just one approach. Sometimes you see them body mapping or sounding out words by using their hands. So it's just more tools in their toolboxes for them to reach children. And so it's good for all children. We know that this approach, for example, has a lot of research for working with students with dyslexia. So if students with dyslexia can learn easier by using some of these strategies and this approach, we feel like all students can benefit from that as well as teachers. We will continue to collaborate with special ed teachers regarding data analysis and support of formative assessments. For example, we, our students, SPED students, obviously take our state assessments and our formative assessment in our district. So we include our special ed teachers, working with them and discussing specific strategies of how to work with children who are struggling, who have different needs. And lastly, continue to collaborate with principals regarding overall needs of special education teachers. Just like students need their work differentiated, our teachers need differentiation when it comes to professional development and working with various students. So we will continue to do that and we're doing that already. We have been doing that. But we've added, for example, additional piece to our data conversations. And at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Atkinson.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Ms. Gregory. As Mr. Newton has said and as Ms. Davis has said, we are continuing to collaborate with the Special Education Services Team to make sure that we are aligning our general education and our special ed instruction and curriculum because our special ed students are, of course, taking our SC Ready and our EOC courses. So we want to make sure that our students that need special strategies, that have special needs, that we are exposing them to the general education because they're going to be assessed on the general education. Also, we're going to continue to offer professional development with special ed and general education teachers in the following areas. Mr. Newton has already mentioned some of those. Big Ideas is our adoption for math in kindergarten through Algebra II. So we invite our special ed teachers along with our general ed teachers to get trained in Big Ideas. Lucy Calkins, Units of Study, which focuses on writing. They also have the opportunity to attend our Homegrown Institute that we have offered now, I think, for the fifth year during the summer. So that again, special ed teachers know what regular ed teachers are doing in the classroom. So the same language is used. Even if a student has an IP in writing, they may need a different support, but they are hearing a common language. As I mentioned a few moments ago, we are going to have new biology standards for the upcoming school year, working with our special education teachers at the high school so they understand what those new standards mean. And so in those support lab classes, they can support what the biology teacher is doing. And as Ms. Davis mentioned, we are looking at doing some, some team teaching, some co-teaching or inclusion along the way. We will be getting new English Language Arts standards as well. The 2324 school year will be the bridge year for those standards in K through 12. We want to make sure that our special ed teachers are coming along with us on that journey so they will understand what is going to be expected of their students as those standards change. Again, we will continue to utilize our formative assessment system, our benchmark system, to monitor progress in math, English Language Arts, specifically sixth-grade science, biology, and U.S. History. And of course, math is also included in the high school algebra. Dr. Coleman.
So that, that is the end of the presentation. We'll be glad to take any questions you may have.
Board members, questions?
Just a quick question from Mrs. Atkinson. You said that the teachers are going to be trained with learning how to teach four-by-four. Is that like a summer training that you guys will offer?
Yes, ma'am. We are going to offer some things virtually in Mobile Minds, which is our virtual platform. And we are also working on offering some other things this summer and also at our August in-service and of course, at our October in-service. A number of our teachers, if you look at our high schools, we're teaching on a four-by-four, but we're also teaching on a traditional schedule. So they have experience, but for our new teachers, for our international teachers that maybe have no experience, we are going to be providing some support for them. Yes, ma'am.
And I ask that because I really want you guys to make sure that you provide that support, especially to our high school teachers because we don't want classroom management to really get out of control when students are only used to being in the class 45 minutes, 60 minutes. Now you're adding an hour and a half. But we don't want those teachers thinking it's free time and given two and three 15-minute breaks because I've seen that, and not so much in Richland II, but throughout where every 30 minutes or so, here's a 15-minute break, here's a 15-minute break. So it's defeating the purpose of what you're trying to do if you're indicating so many breaks. So I hope that's filled with more academics and less breaks.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And both of our school principals have been doing a very good job at their schools, talking to their teachers, asking their teachers what they need, going ahead and getting those teachers ready. So yes, ma'am, that's higher on our So yes, ma'am, that's high on our priority list.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
I have a question. So I know like when this happens, I've worked at underperforming schools. The State Department comes in, lots of PD, lots of training, and I'm just thinking about our teachers and currently what they're saying and how they're feeling. Overwhelmed with PD, overwhelmed with initiatives, overwhelmed with, you know, lots of shifts and changes. So have we sat down and actually just started having real, let's lay it all out conversations with our teachers? And I know that this is a great support plan. I absolutely trust the work that you all are going to be doing, but are we adding more additional PD to our teachers? I mean, what is that going to look like? Because I don't want teachers at, you know, September, October to already start feeling burnt out because I've been in, I know how that feels, being in underperforming school, and you've got to get all these deadlines and have this much PD and look at this much data, this, you know. I don't want us to go through where those teachers are like, oh, I'm done with this at the end of the school year. So what does that process look like from the teacher end in terms of not being so overwhelmed and making sure that we're utilizing things that we already have in place that are already working?
Great question. We really do not have any new initiatives. We are just shoring up and making stronger what we already have in place. Big Ideas was adopted in the midst of COVID. It really was not implemented fully until we got back face-to-face. Dr. Coleman went to both of the high schools that are underperforming and did a wonderful presentation, laid everything out on the line, answered tons of questions from teachers. And as of right now, you know, we're kind of in a waiting pattern with the state. They're not coming in right now and giving us anything else to do. As Dr. Coleman said a few moments ago with our underperforming schools, they have said, you know, give us a year. They're still working that out. But we are talking to teachers. They know what list their school is on, if it's on the list. They know the why. They know the subgroups we've got to move to get off the list, and more importantly, they know that we are here to serve and support them, not give them more to do.
With the co-teaching, Ms. Washington, one thing, we've been dabbling in the co-teaching. We've had different schools send staff members. We haven't done anything consistently, but there has been great interest. So we are getting with a consultant so that it can be system-wide. We all can hear the same message, and we decided this year coming up, we're just going to just do training so we can take it slow and incremental over the first year. The second year, we would implement and monitor so that we're not saying, oh, we're going to do this in August. We can take our time and do it, and since we already know that there is an interest, we can move forward with it with something that everybody in the system, our general ed and special ed, will benefit from.
Board members, any other questions? Thank you all. Item 12, agenda items for next meeting. Mrs. Gregory?
All right. For Tuesday, May the ninth, we have a public hearing. We will be having a public hearing on the 2023-24 budget. Our call to order approval of agenda, public session will recess, and the board will convene an executive session where we'll discuss student admission requests into adult ed, student appeals, breach of contracts, employment recs and certified releases. We do have a grievance. Public session will resume at 6:30 with our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from the previous meeting, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. We'll have our first session of public participation and then voting on the executive session items that I just mentioned. For unfinished business, action requested. Nine-one, the revision proposal on policy BEDB, board agenda, we discussed tonight. Nine-point-two, the proposal on policy BBBD, board member removal from office, again from tonight. Under ten, unfinished business, no action requested. Ten-one, discussion on policy BID, board member compensation and expenses. And under ten-two, we will have a legislative update. We have delayed those, but with the timing, we feel like the legislative update, it's time for one of those. Under new business, no action requested. We'll have the third quarter financial report and anything else with the budget that needs to be included. And then the agenda items for the next meeting, we'll have the draft agenda items for the 23rd. Public participation if needed, executive session continued if needed, voting on those sessions, and then ending with the board and superintendent comments and adjournments.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Board members, questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden?
I would like to add a slate of policies to the next board meeting for review. They would be policy ACB, policy JB.
JB?
JB.
Okay.
Policy JJAB, policy AC, and policy JI.
Okay. ACB, JB, JJAB, AC, and AI.
JI.
Oh, JI.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right. And Mrs. McFadden, would you mind just emailing that to us as well? Thank you so much. Any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on to item 13, public participation. We concluded pub, did I forget someone?
Madam Chair? I just want to make sure, maybe I missed it, but the updates for safety and security that we discussed.
Updates for safety and security, we need to add on it. Thank you for the reminder.
That are supposed to be on the next meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My apologies.
Okay, public participation. We took care of that earlier. We will now ask for a motion to go into our second executive session.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Trapp?
I would like to make the motion. I have a question. Are there, is there more than one employee grievance tonight?
No, just one employee grievance.
Okay. Well, I move that we recess public session and convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing an employee grievance, a parent grievance, and a contractual matter regarding the lease and purchase of property.
There is a parent grievance, just to hear.
One, that's what we, yes, that's what we're talking about.
Yes, and employee grievance.
Right. We're all good.
I'm sorry. It was listed twice.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to go into, oh, I heard her out. She did, too. To go into executive session to reconvene for employee grievance, parent grievance, and a contractual matter regarding the leasing and purchase of properties. Board, is there any discussion?
I think motion's correct.
Okay, board members, please vote. The board will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Trapp?
I move we adjourned executive session at 10:08 and we reconvene in public session.
Is there a second? Motion has been made, Mr. Trapp, to reconvene or to adjourn executive session at 10:08 and reconvene in our general board meeting and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Board, is there any discussion? And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Moving on to item 15, voting on executive session items. And board, I gave you the wrong instruction. For item 15.1, we are going to first take the parent grievance. Do I have a motion for the parent grievance? I'll make a motion that we support, I move to support the decision of administration to uphold the administration's decision.
Second.
Is that for the remainder of this?
For the remainder of the school year, yes.
Would you repeat that?
So I move to support administration's decision through the end of the 2022-2023 school year and support administration's decision on this parent grievance. The motion's been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Board, is there any discussion? And the motion is correct. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Moving on to item 15.2, employee grievance. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. McFadden?
I move that we deny the administration's recommendation and direct the administration to return employee back to Blathwood High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Dr. Scott. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion.
I move to deny administration's recommendation and direct administration to return employee
Is that correct, Mrs. McFadden? And the vote is, I'm sorry, put my glasses away, six yes, one no. The motion carries. Moving on to board and superintendent comments. Item 16, Mrs. McFadden.
Okay, so I do have something to say tonight. As a representative of this community, I'm inclined to speak on the emails, phone calls, and messages from our community concerning the Blathwood High School No Hate Program. I emailed the district this afternoon and inquired about the program, and I was sent an email back. So what I received was a Federal Equal Access Act of 1984, 20 U.S. Code, Section 4071, that provides that it shall be unlawful for any public secondary school which receives federal financial assistance and which has limited open forum to deny equal access or fair opportunity to or discriminate against any student who wished to conduct a meeting within that limited open forum on the basis of religion, political, politics, philosophical, or other content of the speech at such meetings. Other federal protections come from the First and Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution. However, I'm not certain that that applies to a school-wide parade that is intended to highlight sexual activity amongst minors. The term gay is defined as sexually or romantic attraction exclusively to people of one's own sex or gender. It is illegal in the state of South Carolina for persons to have sex with a minor that is younger than 16 years old. A lot of our students are 16 and under, so I would not want to be put in a position where we could possibly be contributing to delinquency of a minor by supporting this type of program. It is stated that gay is defined as sexual attraction or sexually or romantic attraction to one's own sex or gender. That means that they have to be having sex in order to be considered gay. I don't think that belongs in our school. Therefore, the policies that I had pulled, which are policy JB, JJAB, AC, JI, and policy ACB, will address these concerns because they were sent to me as policies within the district that I think that we need to take a look at and figure out our stance on this because this is something that our community has sent tons of emails and messages about, and I think we should address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mr. Trapp?
I don't have any comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington?
I just want to say I had a chance to go to the graduation for the early college students who received their associate's degree from Ridgeview High School. I want to say to all of those students, congratulations. I had an amazing day at the Capitol, meeting various representatives such as Ivory Thigpen, Leon Howard, and Mike Fanning. It was so exciting to just see the energy of school boards who are there championing education in various ways. I'm excited this week to be able to connect with the teachers of the year. Something was said by Mr. Dandridge tonight, and it was really powerful, and it was, he just said simply to his students that he loves them. And I want to say to Richland, too, I love you. I ran because I love this community. And like he said, together, we can do the impossible. But I also want to quote a pastor here in Columbia. She did a workshop called War in Silence and Love in Public. And in the midst of all that we have to say in the emails that are coming through and the phone calls and the comments about what is happening at our schools, I'm a little tired of the division in our community, and I wish that even in the midst of animosity, that we can choose to love. Our job is to educate children, and I hope that we can provide the same equal opportunities for students who want to share their beliefs, who want to talk about the love of Jesus, and who want to have similar clubs as well. And so not to continue on and harper on, but I am hoping that as a community, we can come together and love our students, no matter what they believe. But I also hope that as a district, we can focus on educating our children because that is our job and that's what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I wanted to echo sentiments about what Mr. Dandridge had presented today. I love the cricket traits that he mentioned, and I really wish that we could take him on the road and to some of our middle and high schools and have him speak to every school about those cricket traits. And also, I wanted to recognize our military students in our district. I see all of the, I saw the camouflage yesterday and the sea of red, white, and blue today, and I love that our district is supporting and celebrating all of our military students. I also want to recognize- I also want to recognize, as I, too, have received many emails in reference to some of our club-sponsored activities of our students, and I just want to recognize that as a school district, I do support our students and them being able to have club-sponsored events and them feeling that their voices are heard and that they're able to do, to be able to express themselves at school. And I want them to know that they can do that and that we love every part of them and that in a public school, that we love all students and we teach all students and we embrace all students. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Nash?
Well, it has been a very, very long night. To everyone watching at home, thank you guys for watching, and for everyone that was here, thank you all for being here. Hopefully, next time, we can have a little air while we're sitting here so it's not as hot. But a couple of things, I wanted to thank Mr. Dandridge for speaking tonight. As many people know, and as he said tonight, it's autism awareness, and I have a stepson who thrives with autism, and one of the things he said was, I can do the impossible. And at one point, people told him that he would never leave home, never be able to get a license, and he currently lives on his own and has a job. So I want to say to all of those young people, older people who are thriving and being champions with autism, your disability doesn't make you weak, it actually makes you strong, and keep doing what you're doing and keep listening to Mr. Dandridge. The other thing I want to say is, you know, again, we, we're touching on this subject because I don't want to dismiss the people that came up here and spoke tonight. I think one of probably my biggest concerns as well is that during our education time right now, we're dealing with learning loss and everything else, and it also, our having parade is the necessary thing that we need to do during school time. I think that's a question that we need to ask, and are those activities served best in after-school? Because I think also that cuts down on the controversy and allows for a lot of these other activities be done as well. That being said, I also hope that some of the other clubs, like Release Time, and all those are also welcomed in our schools if they decide to do something that they would like to do as well. But again, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight for you guys being here and just always being faithful and staying till the very, very end and with smiling faces. So thank you all, and I hope you all have a great rest of the week. Looking forward to the Teacher of the Year on, is it tomorrow? I don't know. I've got like 50 events. So Thursday. Okay, so I will see everyone that's going to be there on Thursday, but thank you guys and have a great night.
Dr. Scott?
Yes, it has been a long night, but I do want to say something about school safety. I want everyone to understand that school safety is our top priority. Many of you have seen the news and saw what occurred at Ridgeview High School today. I want you guys to know that we are serious, and we're not playing with you all. Parents, please, please, please talk to your young people. We care about them, but they are not going to come to our schools and disrupt the learning environment. We're going to hold them accountable. So parents, please talk to your students because school is supposed to be a safe haven. We want students to arrive to our schools safely, and we want to send them back home in one piece, very safely. So again, we are going to take these matters serious when you come to our schools, you disrupt the schools, you bring weapons to our schools. We are not playing. We are serious about that. That does not belong in public education. Now, on a different note, I want to say this. I used to be a quote person all the time. If you guys remember, I always had to share a quote, and I think I'm going to go back to that. Serving on this school board has truly been an honor for me. And same foolishness sometimes, just different faces. So I'm going to say this, because many times, people, actions, and words don't match. And if you know me, I'm very outspoken and will continue to be because I'm going to hold you accountable when you say you're going to do something, when you say you support something. I'm going to hold you accountable for that. You're not going to allow other folks to do your dirty work. So I'm going to say this, and people can take it any way they want it, but this is what I'm going to say. I saw this quote a couple days ago, and I said, I need to get back on my quotes. And this is Steve Jobs. It says, "If you want to make everyone happy, don't be a leader. Sell ice cream." Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. Gregory?
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. As Dr. Scott mentioned, there was a close-quarters fight at Ridgeview High School outside of a classroom today where a student was stabbed. The school admin team has been in touch with the family, and our thoughts are with the student and family and those involved. I want to give you my assurance that the district is looking at every angle of this situation, and we're working closely with law enforcement. I propose we move forward with our conversations on metal detectors in high schools, that we move forward with the metal detectors in high schools. I would like to have all our high school principals at the next School Board Safety Committee meeting chaired by Mrs. Nash and have a conversation about an implementation plan, what it will take to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. And I want to thank all of our presenters tonight. We got a lot of information, very helpful information that I think is really going to benefit the board and the district as we move forward, particularly with our strategic plan. I appreciate those who came to express their thoughts and share with us at public participation. And finally, I want to wish Roxanna and Georgette a happy professional, administration professional day tomorrow. Thank you for all you do. Have a great night. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott to adjourn tonight's board meeting. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the motion carries, 7-0. The meeting is adjourned.